Joint City Council Planning Commission Special Meeting for February 11th. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Alpert.
Here.
Commissioner Wallace.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Curtis.
Present.
Chair Kuznick.
Here.
Councilmember Adler.
Here.
Councilmember Juwena.
Present.
Councilmember Rubio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Veros.
Here.
And Mayor Armstrong.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so tonight we've only got one item for this joint council and commission session. We've got only an hour before our city council meeting, so let's try to keep the questions and comments pretty concise here tonight. As far as the process, we're gonna receive the staff report initially. We are going to then open the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing. We'll have staff and commission ask questions of either the staff or the applicant, and then we'll get any further discussion as well. So, and there's gonna be future meetings on this topic, so this is more of an introduction as to what this topic's all about. So, let's try and stay on topic and not get decisional or positional at this point, and make sure staff has any or the questions that we have. If they can't answer them tonight, then at least they can take them back. And at future meetings, because there will be future meetings, they can at least get us the feedback at that point. So, let me ask the court to introduce the topic here, and then we'll have Cindy give us a shot.
Item 2.1, Joint City Council and Planning Commission Public Hearing, General Plan Amendment for Downtown Mixed Use North, DMUN Site-Wide Floor Area Ratio FAR Amendment GPA 2024-0001 and Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment for DMUN Site-Wide FAR Amendment TA 2024-0003.
Okay, thank you. And Cindy Yee, you're up.
Okay, well, great. Thank you so much. My name is Cindy Yee. I'm with the City of Sarafamo planning division, senior planner, working on this application. The request in front of you this evening is for two amendments, one amendment to the general plan and one amendment to the zoning ordinance. And it's related to the zone and land use designation that's referred to as the downtown mixed-use north area. The request is to reduce the minimum site-wide FAR, which currently is 1.25, to a new minimum of .5. So tonight's hearing is the first in a series of public hearings that the city will hold on the general plan amendment and the zoning ordinance amendment. Tonight, we're here to take any feedback and comments from the public and prepare for our next follow-up meetings to provide question, answers to the questions that you might have. No formal action is going to be taken this evening, so we are just here really to provide an overview because it's quite a technical question that's being asked. So, just to get familiar, downtown mixed-use north or the DMU north project area is a 205-acre area within the city core. It's generally referred to as north of Executive Parkway, west of Alcoa Boulevard, east of I-680 freeway, and then properties that border Norris Canyon Road. So, right in the middle of the city's core. Now, DMU north is defined in the general plan and zoning ordinance, and the description of the land use and the zone more or less replicate each other with the exception of changing the word land use to zone and zone to land use in the general plan and the zoning ordinance. But DMU north is defined as an area that is encouraging an integrated neighborhood of commercial and residential uses within the core area of the city. The intent is really to incorporate new residential development within the existing office setting that's pedestrian-friendly, provides open space, trail connections to the Iron Horse Trail as well as city center. The density range was set with the general plan adoption of 20 to 60 dwelling units per acre. That remains unchanged as part of this application. The site-wide minimum FAR was established as 1.25 with the maximum at 2.75 as part of the general plan update. And that was effective as of 2023. So, just to real brief explanation of what floor area ratio means and what the change would mean as part of the applicant's request. Sunset Development Company is, as a property owner within the DMU north, has requested a reduction in the minimum site-wide FAR. FAR is expressed as a decimal number, and it's defined as the net floor area of a building on a parcel divided by the total gross area of that parcel. So, net floor area is essentially the building minus things like garage, parking spaces, balconies, porches, stairwells, elevator shafts. And then you divide that by the gross parcel area. So usually, a parcel's acreage is identified as one acres, two acres, right? So however much floor area is in the building, you divide that by the gross area, that will give you your floor area ratio. So this diagram just depicts if a floor area ratio was 0.25 is your limit. That means if you have a one-floor, one-story building, it can only cover 25% of that area as a maximum of 0.25. So, minimum and maximum site-wide FAR really identifies the intensity in which the city expects parcels to be developed. Density range is how many units per acre the city expects. And so we continue to maintain a 20 to 60 dwelling units per acre standard in this zone, but the request is to reduce the minimum floor area ratio, the amount of floor area that needs to be built on a property in order to achieve consistency with the development standards. So prior to the general plan 2040 being adopted, there were no minimum site-wide floor area ratios in the city. We only had maximum floor area ratios that ranged from .7 to 1.35 in different areas of the city, but the city has not had a site-wide minimum until the general plan 2040 was adopted. We now currently have four areas in the city, four zones in the city that have site-wide minimums. Mix you, and they're all in the mixed-use zone, so the mixed-use commercial emphasis, the mixed-use residential emphasis, the DMU north, and then an area that's referred to as the DMU south in, south of Bullinger Canyon Road. And they have these ranges that signal to a property owner, if I want to develop on this property, how intense must I build this property at as a minimum and what is my upper limit as the maximum? So, for example, on a one-acre site, if, if one acres is 43,560 square feet, it means that a 1.25 minimum would require that at least 54,450 net building area has to be built on that site in order to achieve the 1.25. If we, the applicant's request is to reduce that minimum to .5, and using that same example of a one-acre property, the new minimum of site, of the site's building area would now be a minimum of 21,780. So, the effect is a overall reduction in the intensity potential for a site to be developed As I've mentioned, the applicant made an application in October. They currently own 12 parcels within the DMU north zone. It's approximately 96 acres of the 205 acres of the overall DMU north. There have been two applications recently that were filed on the applicant's parcels where those developments were unable to achieve the minimum 1.25. And so, the applicant has made a request to amend that because they see that inhibiting the potential for development, not just on their existing parcels, but potentially in the future as well. The proposed general plan and zoning ordinance text amendments are highlighted in Attachment B, so you can see what specific changes are requested to be made. Specifically, when you drill down to what those yellow highlights are, it's changing the language that currently reads minimum 1.25 to now 0.5. So the text changes proposed are pretty straightforward as far as what, how the general plan texts and how the zoning ordinance texts would have to change. And again, no changes to the density range, the maximum FAR would still remain at 2.75. From a housing element standpoint, just to address that, I, I know that we've worked very hard to get our housing element certified and adopted. In the housing element, there is no reference to minimum site-wide FAR. The site-wide FAR was established post-housing element adoption. In, when the housing element was adopted, we still only had a maximum .7 FAR. And so from a housing element standpoint, it doesn't impact the certification of the housing element. In the housing element, it does refer to that the city was looking at increasing the maximum FAR to allow for additional flexibility for properties to be able to increase intensity on their site, but there's no mention of a minimum site-wide FAR. So, with that being said, that concludes my presentation this evening. The applicant also has a presentation this evening that they'd like to provide as well, but as we've mentioned, there will be additional public hearings to discuss the proposal and any questions that you might have. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the applicant now if, if that's.
Go ahead. Please.
Good evening, Mayor Armstrong, city council members, Chair Kuznick, and planning commissioners. On behalf of Sunset Development, I'm Stephanie Hill. I appreciate the opportunity this evening to discuss Bishop Branch and more specifically downtown mixed-use north zone. While primarily Bishop Branch is known for our office spaces, we are transforming into a vibrant mixed-use district. We are continuously adapting and investing in a balanced ecosystem that supports both work and life. The downtown mixed-use north zone includes five Bishop Branch offices, BR7, BR8, BR9, BR11, BR12, and BR15, very originally named. Bishop Branch 12 was Sunset's first office development, built in 1978. Over time, Sunset's office campuses became larger, shifting from two-story buildings to five-story buildings. For reference, we've included the existing floor area ratios that Ms. Yee explained in terms of looking at lot size versus building intensity. And what you can see is that, for example, to meet the minimum site-wide FAR for DMU north, we would need to substantially increase the development within these office campuses. For Bishop Branch 15, which is the most developed site, we would need to roughly double the amount of office that was provided in order to hit the minimum site-wide FAR of 1.25. The city's recent housing element identified BR7, BR8, and BR11 as housing opportunity sites to help the city achieve its regional housing needs allocation. The zoning allows for these sites to be 100% residential with a density of 20 to 60 units per acre. While density and FAR are two ways to measure the intensity of development, typically residential is measured by units and not by FAR. As Ms. Yee referred to, we have two applications that have been processed in DMU north. The first is Bishop Branch 7, it's Bartlett. It was approved in December by the planning commission, and it includes 190 homes. It's a mix of multifamily homes as well as single-family detached homes. And the design is really consistent with a lot of what's described in the downtown mixed-use north zone, in which it is pedestrian-oriented, and it includes streetscape and enhancements to the walking district and iron horse trail connectivity. So it really creates a sense of neighborhood in place of the existing office building. A residential application is currently in process for Bishop Branch 11. This is located along Camina Ramon and Norris Canyon. The community includes 195 residential homes. Again, it's a mix of townhomes and multi, and single-family detached homes like Bartlett. It's pedestrian-oriented, a walkable neighborhood, and it's comparable in scale with complementary architecture to Bartlett and City Village, which is currently under construction by Summerhill And this is some sample renderings of what the architecture looks like. While we're focused on DMU north this evening, it is important to consider its adjacency to CityWalk, 135-acre development located immediately to the south of DMU north. CityWalk includes 4,500 residential homes within five neighborhoods. The residential communities are envisioned as five-to-seven-story multifamily homes with structured parking. This type of building typology is required to achieve the minimum site-wide FAR for DMU north, and CityWalk includes 12 of these building development opportunities. Belmont Village is the first community to be completed within CityWalk. It's senior living, which welcomed first residents earlier this month, and it's six stories with an FAR of 1.4. So it's just over the minimum threshold for the site-wide FAR that's been included for DMU north. Related is approved for 383 homes, and this is predominantly located along Bullinger Canyon. And again, this is a large seven-story community with structured parking. And finally, the third community within CityWalk, which has been approved, is Avalon Bay. This is again along Bullinger Canyon with frontage along Iron Horse Trail. It has 457 homes. It's a mix of a five-story building and a seven-story building, structured parking, and approaches an FAR of two. So it's well within the threshold, but provides just a visual of what, what do these FARs look like for different types of residential. And just in conclusion, balancing complementary housing types, including multifamily and single-family homes, is essential to the success of the downtown core. The overall land plan for the Bishop Branch District envisions denser residential along Bullinger Canyon and city center comparable to CityWalk, and then transitioning to smaller-scale development to the north and the south. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay. I initially said that we would, at this point, do the public hearing, but I think I do want to take questions from the commission and then the council before we open up the public hearing. So, I'd like to turn it over to Chair Kuznick, and if you could see if any of your commissioners have questions for either the applicant or staff.
Thank you, Chair Kuznick. I do have a couple of questions for staff. Hi, Cindy, thank you. So my first question, if, if somebody would like to come and develop in the future after this general pan, plan amendment has been approved, will they be restricted in any way versus what they can develop today, i.e., they can build at 1.25 and 20 to 60, just as if nothing changed in our plan? Is that correct?
That's correct, because the .5 just sets the lower limit. It doesn't change the upper limit, and so any potential development that's proposed can be within that FAR range and within the density range. They would continue to be allowed to be developed.
Thank, thank you. My second question is, when we were putting together the housing element, HCD scrutinized our, our first version of the housing element. In fact, I recall they sent back eight pages of suggestions on how to improve our housing element. And as you shared earlier, our initial housing element did not include a FAR. It, did HCD in any of their comments and scrutiny and examination ask the city to include FAR in the housing element?
But they did not. The state law really focuses on density ranges and making sure that any of the new zones that are proposed would be within that range. There were no, and I went back today just to double-check all of the correspondence from HCD. There were, there was no mention in either the initial feedback letter from HCD on our draft and as well as on our certified element about floor area ratio.
Right. Is it safe to say they're really more concerned with getting the units built to meet our arena versus the hell, what the buildings look like?
Right. And, and that setting the density range is really what signals to a, a property, the expectation that HCD has for producing units as opposed to the, the types of units that are produced.
Okay, great. And then my last question, this may or may not be an answer for tonight, but for future. One of the findings we need to make is how this is consistent with and supportive of our general plan. And my, my specific question, would a change like this be supportive of some of the programs or other elements of our general plan goals or policies that we, we agreed that we would look at at some point when we got, had the plan approved?
I would believe so. We, as the applicant has mentioned, there's two active applications in the DMU north. We also have a third application actually in the DMU south that has also raised the issue with FAR being a, something that cannot be achieved on, on that project. And so, we're running into the same conversation with property owners and developers that are saying, the standards that the city has set have made it difficult for my property to develop at the range that the development standards are at. And so, either a density bonus exemption or a change to the general plan amendment is something that the city would, would then should be considering as, as potentially a constraint to the ability of a property owner to develop their property.
That makes sense. Thank you. No further questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Wallace.
Hi, a long time no see.
Hi.
One of the areas that both you and Ms. Hill talked about was BR7. Now, we approved that last month. BR7, I believe, is about 190 units, correct?
Right.
And they are basically 1,800 to 2,400 square foot townhomes and single-family homes.
I'm going to assume that, that those are the correct numbers. That, that's not my project in particular, but I, I believe that's correct.
Okay, you can disclaim personal knowledge. Both Ms. Hill's presentation, yours, and the material that we on the planning commission received for BR7 said the FAR was .72. That recollects that?
Yes.
Now, obviously, given your presentation, .72 FAR doesn't qualify under our existing FAR for DMU north, correct?
Right.
But BR7 was allowed to build at .72 FAR, were they not?
That's correct.
Okay, and the way they did it is as follows. The city has a state, has a density bonus ordinance which requires certain levels of affordability in a housing project. One of those income levels is extreme, is very low income, correct?
Right.
Now, of all the income levels that we are required to produce to satisfy the overlords in Sacramento, isn't very low income the hardest one to meet?
Well, I, I guess it depends on very hard, from a financial standpoint, is difficult because of the difference in market rate to, to construct a, a lower income unit and how much you can rent or, or sell that at.
Correct.
Right. But as far as construction, it's essentially the same.
Now, Commissioner Alpert mentioned our housing element, which we worked on two and a half years.
Right.
And in the housing element, there actually is a chart which shows based on 2021 numbers, what a developer can sell a affordable unit for based upon, A, income levels and B, number of households. So you could actually look and see if a developer was required to sell a unit for a very low number as opposed to a low number, it would show you what the haircut the developer was taking, correct?
Yeah, that's based on assumptions that, at the time of, of.
Right.
How much units cost.
Right. And at least in some places in California, they've updated those numbers, because I've seen them. Now, we also have a state density bonus law, do we not?
It's, so we have an inclusionary housing ordinance. I think that was what you're referring to locally.
Right.
And then, yes, we also have state density bonus law.
Now, under the state density bonus law, which you referred to in your presentation, if a developer agrees to allocate 5% of the total units to low income, to very low income, they get what's called a density bonus, correct?
It could either be a minimum of 5% of very low or some additional alternative to that, but yes.
Right.
One, that's one of the ways of me getting a density bonus.
That's correct. And if a developer qualifies for the state density bonus, one of the benefits of that is they get, A, one concession, but B, unlimited waivers, correct?
If they have the minimum 5%.
Right.
Right. One concession, if they agree to do additional, there may be potentially additional concessions beyond the one, but at the 5%, very low.
Right. So, and one of the things that can be covered by a waiver is FAR, correct?
That's right.
Right. So, if a developer is required to meet our inclusionary housing ordinance by setting aside 3% of the units for very low income, but he gets a state density bonus if they bump that up to 5%, the FAR can disappear, correct?
That's right. And that, that was the subject of the Bishop Branch 7 application, and that's the proposal for Bishop Branch 11 as well.
Now, in the case of BR7, which is almost 200 units, the difference between what's required under our inclusionary housing ordinance and the state density bonus law is about 2% of the total units to qualify for the density bonus, correct?
I, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but I.
Assume for purposes of my question, that they have to meet 3% very low just to meet our inclusionary housing ordinance, but if they hit 5% very low, wow, they can get rid of FAR and a whole bunch of other stuff. There's a 2% difference in the number of units that's produced. So for us, a project the size of BR7, we're talking about 2% of 200, which is four units. So if the developers moves four units from the low category to the very low category, instant FAR waiver, correct?
I would say it's not exactly as, as instantaneously as, as, as you, you would say, but there, they can make a request to reduce the low-income units, which they still also have an obligation to produce as well. And so, but a density bonus request for a waiver does allow for a property owner to request a, a waiver of development standards.
And as you may recall from one or more of our planning commission sessions, it is extremely difficult, if not almost impossible, to deny a developer a waiver request once they've reached the threshold of 5% very low income, correct?
Right.
All right. Now, BR11, that's another project that has been filed. As far as I can tell from our website, they have filed a final application for development, but it hasn't reached the point where they've been certified as having completed the paperwork necessary to go forward. Now, BR11 is 195 units, very similar to BR7. Now, BR 11 is 195 units, very similar to BR seven. That's three-story townhomes and single-family homes, sort of looks like City Village, actually. Now, the FAR requirement for that, I saw in the papers we got today, is .83, I believe, although when I looked at what we got on the planning commission back in November, it was 1.19, which is still below 1.25. Now, BR 11 has already announced the intention to apply for a state density bonus and to ask us to waive the FAR requirement because they are raising the number of units that is allocated to very low income from 3% of the total units to 5%, correct?
Correct.
So in terms of the units we've seen in Bishop Ranch so far, I'm leaving out BR eight because I'm not sure where they are. They did file a concept review last year, but I can't find it on the city website. The two projects that have come in front of us for housing developments in DMU North have been able to waive the FAR requirement simply by allocating a few more units from the low income category to the very low. Is that correct?
Yeah, and, and I think it's really important to recognize that the reason the state has this density bonus waiver concession process is because oftentimes in different jurisdictions and developers develop everywhere in California, there are always going to be standards in one city or another that may potentially inhibit their ability to build. And so the state, over a number of years, has changed how many concessions, how many waivers, from where it used to be very limited waivers to now unlimited, to reflect the intent that standards have the potential to impact the ability of a property to develop. And so by providing them this alternative to, to a city standard, whether they feel like it's too difficult to meet or financially burdensome, they have this ability to use the density bonus through state law rather than having to, let's say, file a general plan amendment to make a change to allow for the type of development that, that they're seeking.
Right, and that's what-
I'm going to interrupt just briefly, and you're doing great, but in the interest of having our remaining time and include public comment, perhaps a shorter version of-
Well, I'm done with that section, but if, if someone wants to jump in now, I'm fine with that. We have at least one more, probably several more meetings.
Correct.
But I would just, as a, just as general observation, nothing against the other two lawyers on the panel, but if you're a lawyer, sometimes it's hard to not talk.
No, I appreciate it, and I apologize. My first time ever actually cutting you off, Commissioner Wallace, so I apologize. Are you, are, we good?
We're good.
Okay. Commissioner Curtis, Vice Chair Cruz.
Thank you. So who benefits from a lowered FAR? Like, what's the advantage of having a minimum in the city in the first place? And does the developer benefit by us reducing it? Or does the city get any advantage from us reducing it?
So I, I would say that there's a lot of ways to look at, at that as far as an answer. Certainly, there is benefit to the, to the property owner because a lower FAR means a lower barrier to entry to develop a property. They have the ability to then, with the flexibility of a, a lower minimum and a high maximum, to then design something that can fit specifically what their property may want to yield. On the city side, as far as the, the benefits, as I've mentioned, HCD's goal for our housing element is production of units. If a developer is saying that this floor area ratio is a barrier for development and that without a reduction, I'm not able to build the units there. As somebody once said in this meeting, zero units times zero units is still zero units. So that's, ultimately, there is a benefit if we're seeing production in units to meet our RENA, that there is a community benefit to that. But, you know, there are other ways to, to also look at this question of, is it the, within the city's vision of, of what we intended for DMU North?
And given what Commissioner Wallace was just talking about, the state density bonus and so forth, how often has it happened where a developer has not been able to develop what they planned because the FAR got in the way?
So because we've never had a minimum site-wide FAR before the adoption of the general plan in 2023, we have not had any requests for, prior to general plan 2040. So we only had an upper limit of .7 or .1.35 in certain areas. So up until the adoption of the general plan, there's not been any applications to reduce the FAR. Since the adoption of the general plan, because site-wide FAR is limited to just the DMU North and, and South of 1.25, the, the three applications that I've mentioned, Orchards, BR 11, BR seven, have not been able to meet it. Currently, we do have one additional application on the service center building that the commission saw at, at concept that has been able to meet the, the FAR. But they also had a request to exceed the density from the maximum of 60 to 89.
So, but, but BR seven, BR 11 have been able to move forward because they were able to get the density bonus and so forth, correct?
Seven, correct, has been approved. 11 is still pending.
Correct. But on its, on its way.
Correct.
Okay. So really, there hasn't been a huge block of any developer being not able to produce the development that they were looking at based off of the other concessions that they were able to get.
Right, through the tool of density bonus.
Correct. Great, thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick questions, and, and your answers can be brief. When we talk about the net floor, we're talking about, like, if you have a townhouse, it would be the, the layers of the, the floors on the townhouses, and then you multiply that by however many units to get the net.
Correct. So all, all of the units within the development.
Multiplied, okay. I just want to make sure that I understood how the calculation. And I, I want to, and this may be for Ms. Hill, in the chart that, that she showed us with the existing buildings with the current office FAR, I thought I heard that, that these numbers would have to be changed to the current minimum or only when they get redeveloped?
So it's only when a property is redeveloped?
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. Okay. So, thank you. And then the last one, to the best of our collective planning commission memory, these objections were not ever surfaced as we went through the general plan amendments.
Not related to the minimum 1.25.
And, and it is still a mixed-use designation. So the intent was, by those of us city leaders, was that we still wanted to encourage some commercial opportunities, hence the, the way I understood the connection with FAR, as, at least that's my, I thought that that was our hope.
That's correct, because there, there's an infill opportunity when there's an existing development on a parcel to be able to infill with additional square footage to then intensify the FAR.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
We're done.
All right. We'll run down the council, we'll kind of start at this end and work our way down. So Vice Mayor Veros.
Thank you, Cindy, for your presentation. All fantastic questions from planning commission. So I think you already touched base a little bit on why we increased the, our FAR from .7, is it .7? Yeah, from .7 to 1.25. Could you please elaborate why we did that one? What was the reasoning?
Sure. So we actually increased our minimum from zero to 1.25 because prior to general plan 2040, there was no minimum site-wide FAR. The .7 was only the maximum that the city had previously. And so through the course of our general plan conversation, there was a conversation about, we have density, which identifies the number of units, but also FAR will be a designation of sort of intensity of how, when you have a higher FAR, you're going to get more square footage as part of that redevelopment project. And that by having additional floor area, that could get us closer to our regional housing needs allocation by, by signaling that there was opportunities here to redevelop and that redevelopment could look a certain type of intensity. That was some of the direction that came out of our multiple public hearings as far as, you know, there's limited square footage in the city for redevelopment, and if we are looking to redevelop those parcels, we want to be able to try to get as much out of those parcels as, as we can. And so that's one, by, by increasing FAR, it gives the ability for a city to say, we're looking for more intensity on your site.
Thanks for refreshing on that. If I remember right, the couple of reasons that we were focusing is to get more housing so that we can get to RHNA to meet our goals on that. The second thing is, we were losing a huge ground on our commercial, right? So that's one thing that we wanted to improve so that we can increase our tax revenues and all, so that we can increase our commercial space as well as the tax revenue base.
Correct. We, the, the general plan had like two primary goals, I would say, is, is we wanted to look at areas where housing could be developed and really focus in on those opportunity sites, but we also wanted to have the ability to preserve commercial areas as well. And because we took off residential development opportunities off of some of our shopping centers, one way to address that is to increase the intensity on other sites that have, that are identified as housing opportunity sites.
Yeah. So now, what will be the implication on our RENA numbers?
So in terms of meeting our RENA, the RENA was calculated for each housing opportunity site based on a density range. We didn't necessarily incorporate as the FAR as the standard for how we get to our RENA. We looked at density as how we would get to our RENA. We did factor in what development was already on site, you know, what sort of barriers may exist on site that could inhibit somebody's ability to develop on that parcel. But in theory, right, somebody can continue to build at the density range that was set in the housing element, and the city would continue to meet our RENA.
Being times on time constraint, I would like to give the feedback more than questioning. So I definitely want to see what is the implication on our commercial enhancements that are the vibrant commercial that we were planning to do because of this change? And also, I want to make sure that, what is the implication? Did we do any traffic analysis on this? Because if we are building more residential, especially, I live in Windermere area, being lived 18 years in Windermere area, I understand what is the potential dangers of imbalance development, especially when we don't have proper residential in balance with commercial, you have to drive for everything, like even for the basic necessity. So we don't want to get into that situation in this case. So I definitely want to have a study on the traffic as well as our school district also. We need to include that study also. If we are going only with the residential, then what is the implications on our school capacity issues? That's, and also, just want to make sure that, how it is going to impact us in future applications on our other mixed use, like what we went through with the marketplace, right? So if something like that happens, then how we are going to deal with that? So I just wanted to make sure we have that as part of our follow-up on that. Thank you, Cindy.
Okay. Councilmember Rubio, questions?
Yes, just a couple. So one additional thing I wanted to add is, in addition to, just to follow up, it'll make it easier on what Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor Veros just mentioned in terms of our resources and what we have available, is there, I mean, are we going to, in terms of like water and, you know, electricity connections, all of that, are we going to be okay to keep up with that influx?
So I would say that the FAR is really just setting the minimum. The expectation for each parcel that is a housing opportunity site has our, we've already identified what the capacity of, of those sites are, and there's a general plan EIR that was associated with the housing element and the general plan adoption. And that studied the impacts of, of the higher in development potential, right, that, that could occur on those sites. So some of that environmental review has already been done in terms of implications of, so with a lower FAR, potentially you will see less development, right, intensity, and so less potential impact on, on the environment as a result.
Okay. And the other question is, so this kind of bouncing off of what Commissioner Wallace was talking about, we talked, you know, how we have this sort of the minimum being 5% to, for DBLs to kick in from our, from the city end, right? Is there, you know, I know that in other developments, like, for example, there was a bill that was out for coastal bill development to increase density and affordability, they were requiring a minimum 10% affordable before DBLs kicked in. I know that that can create problems, like, because the goal is to facilitate, but is there any way that, you know, we can make a stronger ask so that we're actually, you know, reaching also the socioeconomic goals that we're trying to achieve? But as well as, how does that tie into, you know, our recently increased inclusionary workforce affordable housing that we talked about going from 10 to 20?
So there's two different, there, there's two different laws that address minimum number of units. The city has our local inclusionary housing ordinance that continues to be the 15% of every project that has to be set aside as affordable units. State density bonus law only recognizes that if a developer is increasing additional units beyond the, your typical within a project, that in order to give them some flexibility to be able to develop that project, if you provide more affordable units, you can then have waivers and concessions of, of, of standards in that city. So it, it's, on a local level, we could potentially discuss inclusionary housing and whether or not the 15% is, is the right number and how many within that 15% have to be low and very low. But a developer from a state law standpoint will always be able to qualify it as long as they meet the minimum 5% very low or a different percentage of low or even moderate or senior, and the list goes on of the type of developments that could qualify for density bonus.
And could, but could we say refine our ask so that, you know, in terms of like, as was mentioning, you know, if they do, you know, meet the 5%, I mean, you sort, it's sort of like, you don't want to give them the whole cake.
Yeah.
You want to make them work for it, right? So like, we want to get the most we can out of it as well to be, meet the needs of the community and the demands that, you know, and, and make sure that we're reaching our goals as a city. So what I'm wondering is, is there a way that we could stipulate more so what the expectations and the standards are for the types of DBLs or the number of DBLs that we're willing to concede to based on a percentage? So the more affordable, low or very low they make available, well, of course, that will garner them, you know, it's sort of a linear positive line, you know, one for one.
I, I will say the short answer is no, we can't dictate on the, on the density bonus, what projects will qualify for waivers or concessions. We can still always study that on, on the local side of the inclusionary ordinance, but once a developer hits those minimums, whether they- whether they meet the city's inclusionary or not, they're automatically granted.
Right, from the state, but from our end, I'm talking about, because you mentioned we have our own, right, concessions.
We have our own inclusionary ordinance, but we do not have concessions that are built into our ordinance.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So, and I guess the last question is, just to get more clarity on the purpose and the benefit of the ask today and what we're talking about today, if the DBLs can provide, I mean, I guess, can you expound, let me rephrase that question, can you expound on what the benefit is of this action that we're being asked for by changing the FAR from 1.25 to .5, you know, rather than going through this sort of backward approach of, you know, defaulting to the DBL approach, what is the benefit of making this change versus leaving it as is and the way we've been doing things?
Yeah. By changing the 1.25 to the .5, it would eliminate the requirement that a developer then apply a density bonus request on their application to waive that development standard.
Okay. Okay, great. That's all my questions. Thank you so much.
All right, councilmembers, why not, any questions on the general plan amendment?
Yeah, very quick. Hi, Cindy. Have there ever been amendments before to the FAR? Granted, by the.
We have not processed any applicant-initiated FARs. The city, over time, through the general plan update, has reevaluated floor ratio from tech to.
So the lower the floor, the lower the FAR, the more we could build?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Adler. Okay. All right, then, thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Stephanie, for your presentations. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion for the open of public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I move that we open the floor for public comment, please.
Okay, you got a second? Okay, second, Alpert. And, okay, the, just get a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, public hearing is open. Do we have any requests to speak?
I do have one speaker, speaker card from Johannes Tilahun.
Okay, Johannes, please.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, councilmembers, commissioners, I was debating, do I speak? Do I keep quiet? Do I speak? Do I keep quiet? Finally, my wife said, you're a citizen, let your voice hurt. I don't know if this is the right place, but I see the commissioners are sitting here. I'm not quite sure if they're going to be here on the next meeting after an hour. So I wanted my, my ask to be while they're here, because I don't want to feel like I was speaking behind their back. The story is that last Wednesday, I believe, I was at home doing nothing, and I looked at my calendar, and I saw there was a planning commission meeting, because I've never been to one. And I said, what the heck, I'll come and listen to them. I figured this was going to be boring, like watching paint dry. It turned out to be one of the most fascinating meetings I've ever attended ever by government. The questions they were asking, the way they were asking, the politeness, it was just relentless, Commissioner Alpert, especially Commissioner Wallace, I mean, I, all I said was, these people, they know their stuff. And the quest, I felt sorry for them, for the people who are being asked, the only thing that saved them was that they came prepared. And when I got home, I just went to my wife and I just said, I was so proud of them. And she said, about what? I said, I have no idea. I know I was proud of them. Then, okay, and I said, who are these people? I've never, I mean, I've Googled you, but I've never even heard of them. So I looked it up and I found out that three of them are leaving this year. I don't know how government works. I was about to send an email to Steve, but I asked him so many questions, I figured at one point he would throw me out of the building, so I kept quiet. To me, for you specifically, Mr. Mayor, is that as a former military man and a senior executive at FEMA, who knows what risk is, when 75% of your talent walks out of a door in a six-month period, to me, I just said, oh my God. I'm one of the nine applicants, compared to them, I'm a nobody. I mean, I'm even ashamed that I applied. They said the standard's so high. So for you, Mr. Mayor, I'm the last person to tell you what to ask out of you. You know how to calculate risk. You've lived it all your life. And for you too, Madam Chair, but I don't know you, we'll get to know each other as that. As a citizen, I hope you'll have a plan to find a way of having a succession plan. This kind of knowledge takes years to come. I know Commissioner Alpert and Commissioner Wallace took them decade, if not, I can tell they're not 25 years old. And it takes a long time to get this kind of knowledge. So I just want to point that out. This is not the right place, I apologize. But, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Johannes. Appreciate that. All right, do we have any written comments?
Not for this item, no.
Okay, I think there was one reference in some of the written comments from Brian Swanson. There's a reference in here for this item tonight, but, and, so let's, let's get that into the record as well for this item. I know it's out there for the, it's kind of combined for the city council meeting as well, but there is reference to this general plan amendment as well. Okay, then, can I get a motion to close a public comment? Can I get a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the public hearing is closed, and let's go for any final comments here as we start to wrap up. And I'll start with the commission, Chair Kuznet.
Well, I just want to make sure that staff feels like they got some feedback from us. I think we continue to try to understand the concept of FAR and how that impacts. And so appreciate your time and we look forward to your, your next appearance. So thank you. Gentlemen?
Oh, I can wait till next time.
All right, let me come down this way, Vice Mayor.
Just to, in one or two sentences, I want to make sure that we bring our young adults back to our city, and we want to make sure our first respondents could be able to get a place to live in our city and our city employees, as well as teachers. In order to achieve that, if FAR, definitely, I want to make sure that the FAR should not become a problem for us to develop the units so that then we can make, allow them to come back to our city. So that's my drive for this effort. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Rubio.
And, and just to kind of bounce back to what I had asked earlier, if there's any way we can get information, a little bit more information, clarity on how that ties, all ties back into the affordable workforce housing goals that we have, could we look into that? Thank you.
Okay, councilmembers, why not?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I concur with Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, excuse me, Veros. If there was a way for us to leverage the vote on amending the FAR to help and assist those that work for our city, the officers, firefighters, teachers, to be able to afford housing in the city, that would be, that'd be really great for them. Thank you.
I have a quick question, I'm sorry, and I forgot to ask, because I mentioned the workforce housing in my line of inquiry originally. And I just wanted to be clear, are people with disabilities a category that we can take into consideration or not?
There is a provision in density bonus that talks about housing development for developmentally disabled and other types of disabilities that qualifies for density bonus. Our inclusionary housing ordinance just talks about affordability type and having a set aside for affordability type. It doesn't break it down to, of those units that are affordable, how many will then be set aside for a particular segment of the population? We use priority preference as, as the tool, as our policy for how to direct priority preference to those units.
And I know, because I know there's also like some, some laws or legislation out there that offers, also provides an opportunity for workforce housing for teachers as well, isn't that correct?
Right.
Is there any way we can get information on those two populations? Just get information on that sets to, to see how we can integrate, possibly integrate that into some of those affordable units?
Yeah, and perhaps that's a discussion related to inclusionary ordinance that we can.
Yeah, that would be great. I just would really love to get that information.
Okay.
It'd be great. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Adler.
Questions from between, in the next, right now, take up?
Okay. All right, thank you. I, you know, I see that the next steps here are, were to continue a joint council and planning commission public hearing on February 25th. Yet later on, once the planning commission sees this a couple times more, they're going to give a recommendation and it's going to then come to council for three public hearings. Do we need to have this joint meeting on the 25th? Why, why do you need the city council in a joint meeting if we're still going to get three public hearings later on?
Yeah. So.
Sorry. Reball back. I didn't hear what you said.
My understanding is that the joint meetings are two of the three.
No, they're not, they're not. The, the three meetings for the city council can take place only after the planning commission has made its recommendation.
So to, to address your question, you will have three public hearings after the planning commission has their, makes a recommendation to the council. It's completely up to the pleasure of the commission and council. We have already noticed that meeting, but if for the process, it's not a requirement, we would still have to have two additional minimum public hearings for the planning commission. And February 25th could serve as one of those meetings for the planning commission, but we could also schedule other meetings with the planning commission that were not joint as well.
Okay, I, I don't want to rush a decision on this, but, you know, I'd like to kind of query the commission and the council as to whether or not we need a second joint session. I, I know for the city councils, it sounds like we're going to get three public hearings after we get the commission's recommendation. So I, I'm trying to understand the value of having a second joint council and planning commission meeting.
I guess the only question I would really have is, does a planning commission feel that it would be valuable to have you, for us to meet again in a joint meeting such as this? Is there more information you can impart or ideas and thoughts that you have?
As much as I like to hang out with the city council members, I don't know that a one-hour joint session meeting really moves the ball that much. If you were going to have a joint session, I would do it after we had a full bring your sleeping bags meeting, because then we'll have fleshed out a lot more stuff. And since it's a planning commission meeting, if you want to sit down with a glass of milk or something and watch it, then you'll be able to get all that stuff. So my druthers would be to cancel the joint meeting on the 28th.
Yeah, I think, I agree with it, because rushing in one hour and trying to make decisions on this kind of critical, important factors, we cannot take decisions in one hour. So definitely, I would let planning commission bet it much further and then give us time for council so that we can understand also deliver this.
I think what Commissioner Wallace is saying though is for us to attend one of their meetings that where they're going to have a really.
I don't think the council cannot.
Are you, was that what you were saying?
No, we cannot.
Okay.
No, no, as I said, I'd love to have you around, but you can watch our meetings on videotape and at your own leisure.
Okay, because I was, this was real, okay, so, but you know, okay, so the question I was asking is if we should have a meeting together or not, but you're saying, watch it. Okay, got it. Thank you, thank you.
Any other thoughts on this?
So I'd be inclined to have a planning commission only, and then we can go through the, the details in a much greater level than a joint meeting is possible. And then it also, I think, preserves the independent analysis of what the planning commission is chartered with, you know, as opposed to what the city council is chartered with, so that once we've thoroughly reviewed it and made a decision, you'll have the benefit of the recommendation without going through the, the process that we typically would go through on something like this.
Let me turn to either city manager or city attorney, any problem if we change it to, to not have a joint meeting on 25th?
There is no problem. It has been noticed, so it would be helpful for the record just to have a motion that cancels that meeting and refers this to the planning commission to start their process.
Okay.
I'll move the motion to have canceled the meeting of 25th, joint council, joint council and planning commission meeting and have only planning commission meeting. Is that the motion good?
Yes, and the only question is, is there a date certain or?
Oh, can I ask a question? You're just worrying about continuing the city council meeting, right? You're not trying to set a meeting for.
We're not continuing. We're, we're closing this one and we're just referring it to the planning commission.
Okay, okay.
So, okay, so now, that's a regular city council meeting night, isn't it, February 25th? So a planning commission meeting on this subject would have to be probably to different dates.
Presumably that's in March.
A regular planning commission.
We see our, our fearless leader rising to the occasion here.
So just to clarify, the motion to cancel February 25th, that will then allow staff to then independently notice a new planning commission meeting on this item. We've got a couple of meetings in March that we can, we can calendar and we have enough time to prepare a notice for that. So offline, we'll look at the, the calendar and make sure that we get that scheduled. It'll be in March.
Okay.
Okay, so there's no need to specify a date.
Okay, then can I get a second on this? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so we are going to cancel the joint city council planning commission public hearing on February 25th. Staff will work that as necessary. And do you have all the guidance direction that you need? Okay, then with that, I am going to adjourn this joint session of the.